All right, everybody, it is seven o'clock. I will call the March 25th, 2019 meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people. Counsel, I will, under the approval of the agenda, I will ask that the agenda be amended to add an item under New Business, Item 6.2, Appointment of AGM Delegate for the Greater Victoria Labor Relations Association. Just to provide you a little bit of background, in December, Counsel, may remember that Counselors Parkinson was appointed as a Director and Counselor Kobayashi was appointed as the alternate Director to the GBLRA. Knowing that the Directors hold a fiduciary responsibility to the Board and cannot represent the city at the GBLRA's annual general meeting, Counsel appointed Mayor Martin as the city's representative for that event. Mayor Martin has since been appointed as the CRD's representative to the GBLRA, which carries the same fiduciary responsibility to the Board as Counselor Parkinson and Kobayashi. As a result, Counsel will need to appoint another member to serve as the city's representative to the AGM, which will be held on April the 3rd. So at this point, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please? Moved by Counselor Baxter, seconded by Counselor Kobayashi. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? I just want to point out that Mayor Martin is away today. He's been sick and has taken a few days to rest. With that, we will go to open up the public participation. I'd like to invite anyone present to take this opportunity to address Counsel, to present concerns or ask questions. Comments pertaining to a matter that has been the subject of a public hearing are prohibited where the bylaws related to the matter have not been presented to Counsel for consideration. Just as a reminder, there is a maximum of 20 minutes allotted to public participation under our Procedures bylaw. Topics should be addressed briefly to allow other speakers the opportunity to address Counsel. Those of you that do want to address Counsel, I'd ask that you approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Cambry, 3142 Anthrobus Crescent. As a member of Wanda Fuka Executive, I'm here to speak, hopefully not as the only one, representing our club. We have a prepared speech for you. Curling has a history. Wanda Fuka Curling Club has a history in the CRD. From the beginning with supplementary letters patent, which gave the CRD authority to acquire, develop, construct, maintain, and operate for public recreation purpose. These letters patent allowed the land purchase using taxpayers' dollars specifying the usage. Curling rink is one of the three identified for building and operation using taxpayers' money. There has been no consultation by WSPR with the taxpayers on repurposing this facility. In 1975, the Wanda Fuka Curling Club opened its doors to play. JDFCC is a facility capable of holding provincial, national, and world-class events, and it is one of the two facilities on the South Island with eight sheets of ice. JDFCC has a history of champions, provincial, Canadian, world, and Olympians. Current membership of the Wanda Fuka Curling Club is 538, with an average age range compromising of 32 juniors, 231 members between 20 and 59, and 275 members over the age of 60. More than half of our membership is residents within the five municipalities of Callwood, Langford, Machosen, Highlands, and View Royal. We have long-term members who, although they have moved from our municipalities to other areas, continue to curl at the Wanda Fuka Curling Club. Public recreation facilities do not have boundaries, and Wanda Fuka is an inclusive club, offering membership to those from Oak Bay and the Peninsula when both their facilities were closed. JDFCC has a good relationship with the remaining two curling clubs on the South Island. Working together, we allow paid members as spares to play at each club, supporting major curling events at each venue and developing the growth of curling in our communities. This past year, the Wanda Fuka Curling Club was provided instruction and coaching to 34 groups, a total of 22 youth groups and 12 private groups, 864 participants, some using the ice several times, but an outstanding number of 700 new curlers using more than 115 sheets of ice. WSPR's own 2011 Facility Capital Plan Report, prepared by the professional environmental recreations consultants in Langley, BC, speaks to the good condition of the curling rink on Page 8, Existing Facilities, and recommends to invest the existing eight sheets to keep them usable on Page 17, Recommended Facility Standards. Furthermore, the report recognizes the growth in aging population and more likely to stay in mainstream -- sorry. The growth in aging population and specifically the boomer generation. This group is more active in preceding generations than the preceding generations and more likely to stay in mainstream facilities. Appendix B, Trends in Leisure Services, Canada. JDFCC has a strong 55-plus group, with a wide-open mixed, mostly seniors group Monday mornings, 55-plus day ladies leagues on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the 55-plus men's leagues on Tuesdays and Fridays. Seniors are also involved in coaching new players and juniors, many certified through Curl BC, and volunteer their time to support our programs. The Wanda Fuka Curling Club has been exemplary to host many championships and major curling events. The Jack Anderson Mix Bonspill, a perennial favorite for over 30 years, had 40 teams attend this year and 32 already reserved for the list for next season. Championships have been include Scott Tournament of Hearts, the Carter Juniors, and the Victoria Curling Classic. During the week of March 12th through 17th of this year, the Wanda Fuka Curling Club hosted another provincial event, the 2019 BC U-18 Curling Championships. 16 teams representing different provincial regions competed, complete with their coaches and attended by their families and friends. It was an extremely successful event. This week-long competition brought people from all over the province into Callwood and supported local businesses and put the club on the map. The highest compliment was a request to host next year's championships from the players themselves, something we are hoping to do. West Shore Parks and Recreation has never actively promoted curling as an integral sport in the facility and has relied on the curlers to do the promotion. Despite the lack of support and advertising by WSPR, JDFCC remains determined to grow the sport of curling. Open houses, Learn to Curl classes, special events, and good ice are important in attracting as well as maintaining our members. In 2017, WSPR delayed the installation of ice and cost the JDFCC membership in excess of $800 in advertising costs for scheduled open house. Ice surface preparation and maintenance done by a qualified ice maker was taken over by the maintenance worker with no curling knowledge, resulting in poor ice conditions. Complaints to the facility management on subpar ice conditions were ignored and led curlers looking for better conditions and management at other clubs. Poor ice drives away curlers and opportunities, opportunities to generate outside interest in the facility use for high-profile curling events. Imagine a pool with no water or a hockey rink with no Zamboni. Without proper care and attention, it's an onerous task to recruit. Our curlers have worked hard to increase the numbers despite little support from WSPR. JDFCC operated 12 leagues this season with an increase from the previous year. This is a direct quote from the project manager Jonathan Huggett, October 8th in the 2018 Times Colonist Report. "Recreation is a not-for-profit business. The reason we do public recreation is because communities want it. It's a social service. Swimming pools lose a lot of money. That doesn't mean we shouldn't do them. JDFCC is public recreation, public recreation that is acceptable to a wide range of age and abilities while being affordable on a social environment. The history of this swimming pool, this senior center, and this curling rink as part of public recreation provided by the referendum deserves to remain. WSPR did not consult the members of the community, especially the members of the curling community, for input or opportunity to respond to the possible closure of the club. There was no discussion, no forewarning, only a sudden email on Monday, March 18th, 2019, the day before the ice was scheduled to come out. JDFCC has a strong community support and a willingness to operate a sustainable curling club with determination to keep curling in the Western communities. We ask for fair and due consideration. We, the executive representatives of the Wanda Fuka Curling Club, respectfully request Counsel to put the brakes on and postpone any final decision to future curling at WSPR until options have been fully explored, such as JDFCC becoming a semi-private association so that the sport of curling in the Western communities may continue to grow." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, everybody. Thank you. Okay.
I would like to add and provide to Counsel, we do have a petition with over -- what was our last number?
14, close to 1400.
Great.
Close to 1,400 signatures and counting that we would like to provide.
Thank you. Our CAO will receive that. And I do want to point out, too, that I understand that there is a meeting on Thursday, April the 4th, at 3:00 PM, between the Wanda Fuka Curling Executive, the West Shore Parks and Rec consultant, and members of the Board. So that is coming up. Any one further that would like to address Counsel? Oh, we got one behind you and then you're next. Thank you.
My name's Joanne Anslo. My husband, Tony Anslo, I didn't know you could --
Surprise!
We both live in Selukway in Callwood. We've been active curlers for 30 years at Wanda Fuka, and probably longer for you. We're here in response to the sudden announcement of the closing of the curling rink. It was very disappointing that this decision was made without any consultation with the 520 people who this would directly affect. It was most insensitive to hear it described by the special consultant contracted by the Board of Directors as a no-brainer. We were given no opportunity to respond or to rectify the $11.24 per person deficit. The Board has overlooked the financial resources brought into the community every time Wanda Fuka hosts numerous events over its 44-year history. We regularly host island play-down competitions, provincial competitions, and larger competitions, including the Pinties World Tour event. We just completed hosting the 2019 BC Under-18 Boys and Girls Provincial Competition. Every time one of these events is hosted, it brings recognition and financial resources to our communities. Teams and their families stay and eat in our community. That doesn't appear to have been taken into consideration in making this decision. Also, the curling ice is rented out to private groups throughout the year. JDF Curling Association provides volunteers for this event. West Shore Parks and Recreation's mission statement, that is dedicated to providing diverse and accessible recreational and sport opportunities that offer all West Shore residents excellent experiences for healthy, active living styles, lifestyles, seems to be falling by the wayside. The plan to turn the rink into a money-making dryland space is short-sighted. There are already a variety of dryland spaces in the Western communities, but only one curling rink that provides curlers the opportunity to curl. There have been false assurances provided to the press that the curlers from JDF will be provided spots to curl in Victoria and Esquimalt. Stu Young stated that half the curlers at JDF live outside of the West Shore. That's because there are fewer and fewer places to play the sport. We have 37 mixed curling teams at Wanda Fuka, and there are limited spots at Esquimalt and Victoria as of now. With the closure of Glen Meadows Curling -- last year or two years ago? And now, JDF, the number of available curling sheets will go from 28 to 14. Now, West Shore Parks and Recreation are forcing their own curlers onto other communities. As far as the ice only being utilized 20% of the time, it also restricts practice ice time to Sunday mornings only, and many times, it's difficult to book a spot. Curling is a popular Olympic sport, and JDF should be proud to provide an opportunity for its community to promote the sport. Just this last year, a local junior competitor, Alex Horvath, who came up through Wanda Fuka, won the 2019 Canadian Junior and World Junior Championships. West Shore Parks and Recreation's value statement states that they are committed to focusing on positive working relationships within the community. It states they are open to ideas of doing business in a respectful, fair, and honest way. It states that they are transparent and easily accessible and strive to develop a culture of respect and awareness. In the decision to eliminate the curling rink, they have dropped the ball. It was a heavy-handed, top-down, dictated decision. There has been no attempt to consult or include the community in the decision-making process, and at no time was there an atmosphere of respect. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. I just want to point out, I appreciate the enthusiasm, but I do want to point out that our Procedure bylaw is 20 minutes. And so I'm sensitive to the folks that may not be here as well to talk about curling. There might be some other subjects, and we have about seven minutes left during public participation. So I would ask that if you could just hold your applause and perhaps keep your remarks brief and before we run out of time.
My name is Joanne Stansky, and I live in Callwood. I'm at 3234 Holgate Lane. Approximately two years ago, the city of Callwood commissioned a survey on how to make Callwood more senior-friendly. I completed and submitted the survey, and three suggestions or comments stick out in my memory. I said, "Improve the walking path on Ocean Boulevard as many walkers, especially seniors, walk on it, as it is one of the few level-walking paths in all of Callwood." I am pleased to say Callwood did upgrade the path on the lagoon side of Ocean Boulevard. I made comments on how impressed I was with the Wanda Fuka Senior Center. I joined the center and am a regular walker with the Ramblers and have also gone on a number of bus trips around Victoria and up Island. Thirdly, I commented on how pleased I was with the West Shore Parks and Recreation facility. I have used the pool on a number of occasions and occasionally go golfing on the par-three golf course, but it is the curling rink that I have used the most, and it is one of the main reasons why we decided to purchase a home in Callwood six years ago. When I joined in 2013, my skip was 88 years old. Junior curling starts at eight, and I do not know of many other sports that has an 80-year lifespan. A number of curlers in our afternoon ladies leagues are over 50, and it is a great way to get the seniors out of the house, get some exercise, and socialize. In the last six years, I know of a number of seniors who have recently moved to the West Shore area and have become members of the curling club, which, as already mentioned, is numbers over 500 individuals. So therefore, as has already been stated, is with profound disappointment that last week I read about the decision to shut down the curling at West Shore Parks and Rec. And it is also very disturbing to me that this decision was made and announced without any consultation from any of the communities or any of the curling members that it is supposed to serve. But we all know decisions can be reexamined, reversed, and changed, and that is what we want Callwood Counsel to keep an open mind on this and as we work through this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I believe you had stood up and wanted to speak first. I just don't want you to be demystified. Okay.
I'm just going to say one thing. Wanda Fuka was opened in 1975. I'm 75. I started that year. Look at me. I'm healthy. I curl three times a week, and now you're telling me, "No more." It's not good enough. It's just not good enough.
I again am going to talk a little bit about curling. I'm going to talk a little bit about the U-18s, just to kind of give you a little background. My daughters, Kayla and Sasha, are here. Can you stand up, please? Come up. They are two participants that played in the U-18s. They had to go and qualify in order to do this. They are the only two girls from this area that qualified. All the other teams, there was one boys team, more Victoria, that qualified, so there was four of them, two girls. All the rest came from everywhere else. So, I mean, they came from Kamloops, they came from Vernon. The curling community, especially when you get the competitive at that level, is very close. And we, like I said, we go to Cranbrook, we go to -- where did we go last year? We went to Vernon, we went all over the place. But they started at Wanda Fuka. They learned at Wanda Fuka. Without Wanda Fuka, they wouldn't have gotten into curling. Right now, they curl very often. Between their school and curling, that's basically all they do. So I'm not looking at them so much because they can go elsewhere. You know, they're competing all over the province now, and they're competing at a very high level. They do the tours, but I'm looking at the young kids coming in and the opportunities that would be missed for them, as well as the older people like me that won't go to the other rinks. You know? So I just wanted to bring forth that it's such a growing community in Callwood and Langford, and you're inviting all these other sports like rugby and soccer and all these sports that you should be. All the, you know, it's such a young community, and you should be inviting these sports. But you might get some Olympic champions, too. And amazingly, we have some of the best coaches in Victoria. We have some world coaches, we have some Olympic coaches, we have world and Olympic curlers here, and they give so much back. They've given so much to my children. And I just hope that you're not going to shut the door on all these other kids who won't have the opportunity to try curling. That's all.
Thank you very much. I do note we have one more minute left, and I just want to see if anybody that's non-curling related have want to address Counsel before we bring it back to Counsel meeting. Not seeing -- we're all good. So I do want to thank you very much for coming out tonight and letting us know what your feelings are, and it's great to feel the passion that's in this room and that the subject has triggered. And so thank you very much. And as I say, I think Counsel is eager to hear about the results of the meeting that will be happening on April 4th. But at this point, we need to move on with the rest of our meeting, which you're most welcome to stay for. Okay? Yeah. Well, everyone, we have lots of seats in the front if you want to move up. All right. Thanks, Dennis. That would be good. All right. Thank you, everyone. We will move on to Mayor's Message. Someone's got control out there. I love it. Yes. So this past Friday, we had the pleasure to celebrate the grand opening of Helios, which is the 82 new units of affordable housing at 2005 Suk Road. A couple of great dates coming up. Callwood Spring Cleanup, Friday, April 26th and Saturday, April 27th, from 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. And that's for a small fee. Residents, Callwood residents, can bring everything from appliances and car parts to carpet and wood waste and for recycling and disposal and any other crap that you might have hanging around that you want to get rid of. This is an awesome opportunity for you to do that. The other thing for kids young and old is there is an Easter egg hunt at Meadow Park on Saturday, April 20th, from 2:00 to 4:00. And finally, there is a Callwood Calendar Photo Contest, which is continuing. A March feature photo will be chosen next week. The theme for April will be neighborhoods, and we want to see what you love about your Callwood neighborhood. And thankfully, it's nothing like a firefighter's calendar, so this Counsel will not be posing. So with that, we will move on to Item Number Five, Adoption, and receive the receipt of the minutes. There is one change for the regular meeting of Counsel Minutes for March 11th, which will require an amendment, and that's regarding DVP 18-010, 2915 Dickerson Place. Counsel, you may recall that we authorized the issuance of the DVP and removed the requirements for the ornamental light in Clause M of the 80 row conditions. Staff captured the wording in Clause M, but it was not removed from the opening clause of the resolution. I'll ask that Counsel move Adoption of the minutes as amended to remove the words "except for" the installation of an ornamental LED-type streetlight, a streetlight from the first clause of Resolution R2019-110. So moved? We have moved by Counsel Kobayashi, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Can I get a motion to adopt the public hearing minutes from March 11th? Moved by Counselor Parkinson and seconded by Counselor Day. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Can I get a motion to receive the following minutes? 5.3, Report of Public Hearing, March 11th. Committee of the whole meeting minutes, March 4th. Advisory Planning Commission Meeting Minutes, January 9th. Advisory Planning Commission Meeting Minutes, February 13th. And finally, Emergency Planning Meeting, January 15th, 2019. Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Parkinson. Any discussion? Counselor Parkinson?
Very minor, but I noticed at one point on the February 13th minutes, Paula Young was referred to as Paul Young. Pretty minor thing, but maybe not to her, if we could make that change.
Thank you very much. Yep, we've made note and will make that change.
Okay. Thank you.
Good eye. Called a question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Under New Business, 6.1, Planning Technician Development Variance Application, DVP 19-002, also known as 3122A Lindlark Place. Here, the applicant is requesting to vary Section 5.6.06 of the Land Use Bylaw, which is side yard setbacks for duplex. The application was presented to the Advisory Planning Commission on March 13th, 2019, in which they recommended the development variance permit be authorized for issuance. We do have Dennis Carlson here from Planning. Should Counsel have any questions of staff? There is a recommended motion before Counsel.
I'll move recommendation.
We have the recommendation moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Day. Any discussion?
That's Option A, I presume?
That's right. Yes, thank you. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you very much. We'll ride into 6.2, Appointment of the AGM Delegate for the Greater Victoria Labor Relations Association. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint a delegate, either Counselor Jensen, Day, or Baxter. I'm out of the running because I'm away on vacation, to the Greater Victoria Labor Relations Association AGM on April 3rd. What's Counselor's, Counsel's pleasure? What's councilor's -- council's pleasure?
What time and where?
It's noon at --
At noon.
On the rocks on Douglas Street.
I'll be working.
Okay. Any other?
I do.
Yeah. So it's you or Cynthia? Councilor Day?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Yeah. Exactly. Rock, paper, scissors. Yeah, that's right. They can't attend the AGM. So do you two want to duke it out? Councilor Day?
Thank you. So just, I'm hearing a question beside me, and I thought I'd share it with everyone. The issue is, it's the annual general meeting, and to represent the city, we need someone who isn't already representative because they do get compensation for participation.
We do.
Isn't that the fiduciary duty? No. Oh, sorry.
Nope.
My misunderstanding, but they have an obligation to the board that they regularly belong to. In this case, not a financial one, but it's to have that arms-length observation at the annual general meeting. So, I'm sorry, I need to check my -- I wasn't expecting to be in the hot seat. I have to check my calendar.
What was the date again?
It's Thursday, April 4th. Am I right?
Third.
Third, sorry, Wednesday. Oh, and I already have a booking. It looks like it's you.
I move Michael Baxter.
Okay. 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 Counselor Janson, are you able to squeak out of there for five minutes?
Five minutes for the AGM? Are you kidding me?
Actually, they're pretty quick, actually. The GBLRA meetings are fairly quick.
Can someone send me a note for the boss?
Yeah.
I constantly do a note. I can't help you.
Okay.
I'll write you a note if you want.
Can I have a motion to appoint Counselor Janson as the Callwood representative? Move by Counselor Kobiyashi, seconded by Counselor Parkinson. Seeing no discussion whatsoever. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? And that's how it's done.
It does.
It does, yeah.
Our CAO will be happy to provide some encouragement to your chief. We will move on to item seven, Bylaws. Bylaw number 1754, Land Use Bylaw, Amendment Number 166, text amendment for third reading only. Need a motion mover? Moved by Councilor Day, seconded by Councilor Kobiyashi. Any discussion? All right, no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? We have nothing to release, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Are you kidding me?
No, I am not. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor Parkinson. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried?